It's 5:30 and we'll call our meeting to order for Tuesday, October the 9th. Carl?
Councilmember Remley, Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson. Bunsnus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
I'm here, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need a motion for last week's minutes.
So moved.
Motion, Rux and second by Bunsnus, if there are no changes, all in favors of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. No one signed up for open forum? And we have three ordinances offered for possible second reading and final adoption tonight. And the first is leasing land to Comnet Cellular, ordinance 181004.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Ronine, second, Bunsnus. Any additional questions on this since last week? Carl?
Councilmember Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Bunsnus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is 181005 relating to snow emergency routes added.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Bunsnus, second by Lunsman. Questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to intercede on this one. We did have a concerned citizen contact us, who by the way is a former city employee, to note that there was a mistake in one of the street designations and he was correct. So Clarence, wherever you are, you're highly regarded.
He was supposed to be retired.
But one of the streets identified in the ordinance as Lloyd Street South from 14th Avenue Southeast to State Street South should be amended to read Lloyd Street South from 14th Avenue Southeast to 15th Avenue Southeast. And other than that, there would be no other requested changes.
I move to amend.
Second.
Motion, Ronine, second by Rux to amend. Any comments on that motion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
And any other comments on the main motion? Carl, roll call please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsnus.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item C is 181006 revising rules of traffic and vehicles of the city regarding prohibited parking. Anything new on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
Move approval.
Motion Olson, second by Slate Hanson. Questions from the council on this one? Carl?
Councilmember Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Bunsnus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Our consent calendar has just items A and B tonight.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion, Ronine, second by Lunsman. Questions on either? All in favor of approving then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Under new business, we have a petition of voluntary annexation. Brett?
The petitioner is requesting annex just over three acres into city limits to add to property that they were planning a residential development in. Staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
Motion, Rux, second by Slate Hanson. Any question from the council on this annexation? All in favor of approving then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
And we have a request to sign a joint funding agreement for stream gauging with the U.S. Geological Survey. Possible approval of that tonight in the amount of $20,130.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Ronine, second by Bunsnus. Any management comments on this needed land or not?
Robin would have knowledge on this than I. You know, we've done this for years. It's something that if you don't need it, it's great, but when we have some flooding, it's, these are very needed gauges and so we appreciate approval of them.
Okay.
And we do split the costs with Brown County.
Any questions, anyone? All in favor of approving that agreement then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Bills presented for payment tonight from city boards, $392,819. Northwest Energy Utilities, $86,923. U.S. Bank, principal and interest on a loan, $376,420. Refund of a daycare license fee to AMAVIG, $50. J&amp;K mowing and code enforcement abatements, $291. October recycling, payment to dependable sanitation, $23026. Clark Engineering, Phase II work on Moxon Creek, $285. And U.S. Department of Energy, $500 for maintenance of the roadway meter and $301 refund on utility accounts. I lost the second page. That's it, okay.
Move approval.
Motion, Slate Hanson, second by Bunsnus. Questions on any of those bills?
I was just going to note that with the second, or excuse me, the first U.S. Bank, the credit card purchases, I don't think that was mentioned.
Okay. The $34,000, I skipped over that? Okay. Add then U.S. Bank credit card of $34,263. Any questions? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsnus.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Lynn?
The city attorney is asking for the opportunity to speak about his research on council members and the mayor's salary in relationship to our charter and our current ordinances. So I was concerned about the breakneck pace of this meeting and I wanted to slow us down considerably.
Well, you're talking about council pace, so that captivates us a little bit.
So I wanted to make sure that I was clear with how this matter came to administration, but there was a concern raised by the council about looking at council salaries and making modest incremental changes based, or similar to what the annual adjustments are made for city employees. My understanding again that we weren't talking about any significant increases, but looking at the ability to do automatic annual adjustments. And so I wanted to apprise the council of that in lieu of a long, complicated, confusing memo and try to point it out to you as I also thought that the public would appreciate seeing the analysis as well. But before you, on the screen is section 2.04 of the city charter. And the charter provides that the city council may determine the annual salary of the mayor and council members by ordinance. And I wanted to historically just to apprise the council of where we're at with council salaries. The council members' salaries were established in, I'm sorry here, in 2009, I believe.
Nope, 2005.
2005, at $8,500. And the mayor's salary was set in 2009 at $13,500. There have been no changes to any of those salaries in the last 13 and nine years respectively. And the reason for that is because of this language here at section 2.04, which places a hold on the salaries until the next regular elections of each of the city and council members. And I can tell you from analysis from prior Supreme Court decisions that that would apply to each council member's salary at each new term. So anybody who is voting for an increase in the salary today would not see that unless they are reelected and take a new term whenever their term expires. And again, that's perfectly fine, but that's how the charter sets up now. What I wanted to do is then take you to our code. The city code says that salaries shall be provided for the mayor and council members as established by ordinance. So even though the charter says that it may be established by ordinance, the code is requiring that the council and salary and mayor's salaries be established by ordinance. And here's where it becomes a problem. If the council is looking at an annual adjustment similar to what the city employees get, or a COLAR, or some kind of an index, but some kind of an annual adjustment, then you would never be able to do that. Because every time that annual salary ordinance is voted on, that would restart the time for that council member. So a new council member might see it the very first time, but then when they vote on the next ordinance, then they would never see the increase again. Because it would be effective as to their new term. So it becomes a vicious cycle in light of what the charter says and in light of what this code provision says. As I've been looking at this, it is my determination that in order to set again a modest salary and a modest adjustment, then one way we could do that, short of an election and a change of the charter, would be to amend section 2-24 to allow for the salaries to be established by ordinance or resolution. And then what we would do is we would establish the council members' salaries by resolution annually. And those could be tied to an adjustment, again, by what other city employees make, by index, by some, again, some modest annual adjustment. And you would not run afoul then of the charter provision. So I know it's getting a little complicated, but what I'm telling you is that in order to affect an annual adjustment to the salaries, you would need to amend section 2-24 to allow for that adjustment by resolution. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And what I understand administration has been tasked to do is to come to you with a proposal. And so what I will be proposing in the next week or two, well, actually, we need to do it very quickly because of the timing of the salary ordinance that'll be coming on later on in November. Is that right, Carl? That we would be coming to you with a two-word amendment to section 2-24. And that would be after ordinance, we would add "or resolution." So I want you to understand that. And I can try to explain it again next week when we have this before you. But what happens is if you're looking at an annual adjustment, the charter prohibits that from ever taking, going into effect essentially. Because again, this council votes every year by ordinance for the pay raises. And if you're doing it by ordinance, then the charter says you can't, it won't be effective until the next term. And it's a cycle that kind of keeps eating itself up.
But you're saying if it's done by resolution, it can be effective for the entire council?
Correct. The charter says, and I can go back there real quick. The charter says that it may be done by ordinance, but that if done by ordinance...
It's not effective.
It's not effective until the date of commencement of the terms of council members elected at the next regular election. That's the language that makes it keep eating itself again if you try to do an annual adjustment. And again, to be very clear, it's my understanding that it's always been discussed as a very modest annual adjustment similar to what city employees get, which can be, again, a small amount.
I guess. Go ahead, Dave.
Well, so you're saying since the charter is silent on the word "resolution," we can do this?
I'm saying that the charter allows for an ordinance that sets the annual salary of the mayor and council member, doesn't require an ordinance. That's the permissive language of May.
Members by, it says, you know, shall set, determine the annual salary by ordinance. And I guess I wasn't looking for an annual adjustment. I'm just looking for some way that it could be adjusted that would be fair to all, to where someone who is just elected got treated as someone who is in the middle of their term, irregardless of who they are. You know, but like you say, I'm not looking for annual increases. I just want to be able to periodically take a look at it and increase it, because we haven't had an increase for council members since 2005 without, how do you say, in an equitable fashion.
So to be clear, the task that administration had was to look at how do we do this to allow for an annual adjustment? In order to do an annual adjustment, we will be presenting an amendment to 2-24 by adding the words "or resolution." If, again, if that gets approved by the council, fine. If the council chooses to amend it, that's the process that you guys can do.
Would it be possible, Ron, at the same time that that is proposed, that a proposed resolution that adopted those same annual increases that are given to other, or to rank and file employees, that those would apply to the council as well? Would it be possible to have that produced at the same time?
That's right. I could have that available to show the resolution. Also, the recitals within the ordinance itself would establish where this council sits in comparison to other councils in the state. And just to give you a little background, as a class one, as a first-class municipality, this council is one of the lower paid of the first-class municipalities. For all first-class municipality, municipal councils that meet every week, like you folks do, nobody is paid less than you, both the mayor and the council members. Likewise, we look at our Brown County commissioners that meet every week. Their salaries are in the neighborhood, I understand, of the $21,000 range. This is a very hard-working council. Comparatively speaking, to other first-class municipalities in the state, you are the lowest paid.
Worth every penny.
So at the time that this charter was written, was there, I'm wondering why they wouldn't have put the term "resolution" in there? I mean, are we trying to avoid something here because of technicality?
The truth of the matter is, you read through this, this is not a very well-written document. No. This charter. Yeah, I mean, they've got this permissive language here and you find other permissive language throughout. I mean, it was not tightly written.
Okay. There were spelling mistakes and that we got Adam cleaned up at one point just because they were so glaring that, like you say, it wasn't written while, I know it wasn't written while the first time.
Well, I was accused of being very aggressive about amending ordinances.
Yeah.
Rightfully so. But one of the things that I've not touched is the charter, because we can't touch the charter without going through the election process. And so I just want to be clear. I mean, there are lots of other issues with the charter that I consciously ignore because of the election process.
So have we set salaries at any time with a simple resolution? Have we ever done that?
We can't do it until we amend 2-24.
Yeah. We can't do that. By ordinance, right now, we're required to do it by ordinance.
But once we amend 2-24...
I got it. I got it.
And what would we be looking at for a recommended increase? Are we just talking?
Well, I need to, for purposes of what we will present to the council, it'll simply be your current salaries at the $8,500 and the $13,500, and then whatever that adjustment might be. But again, that's a number you folks need to debate and discuss and decide how you want it.
I can't remember what the pay was the last time we took it away from ourselves.
Yeah, it wasn't very much. But, you know, I'm not speaking about the increase here. I'm going to have to think about this. This just seems like just really too easy for us to make a change to avoid something. And so that's where I'm at here. I, you know, I've spoken to other council members and would be willing to do the, you know, the annual increase percentage that the employees get, but I'm struggling with this, you know, with what appears to be a minor change. But to me, it's, it's, seems to be circumventing something.
And I kind of agree with you, Dave. I think we're kind of bypassing the bigger issue of, you know, there's a lot of things that may be fixed in the charter. There's a lot of things that are archaic. We haven't updated it for 13 years. There's no community in the class one municipalities that have not made changes to their charter. Sioux Falls does it about every election where they are bringing some fourth of amendment to clean up their charter or make corrections to it because things that may have worked, you know, 10 years ago or 20 years ago may not work today. Do we at some point, how would we clean up the charter? Could we put it out on a vote saying this is a new charter or with corrections? Or do we have to go section by section by section?
Well, I got up before you the, how amendments can be made to the charter. And looking at sub A, I'm not quite sure what that means other than a requirement that if there's a state or federal law that requires a change in the charter, then you have to make that change. But otherwise, we could look at C, for example, a charter commission that would review the charter, recommend the various changes, and then go forward with that process of submitting those changes to the voters at the next, at a regular election. If the city of Sioux Falls is regularly making those types of changes, they must have a charter commission.
Permanently sitting.
Yeah.
I'm just glad they didn't put it in as merit pay.
And I'm, can I address that, David? I feel bad that you're looking at this as something fishy. The question that I had to deal with was if we're doing annual adjustments, if we're doing annual adjustments, you can't accomplish that under the current reading of the charter in conjunction with the city code requirement of 2-24.
I think the last time someone was talking, talked about this is that the adjustment would be, and I understand where you're coming from, the adjustment would be made to the individuals that were elected. And then when the next group were elected, they'd be caught up. And then the next group, they would be caught up. And so it was just an ongoing process. But you've stated that that will not work. Or will work?
Under the current reading, it would not work to do that. You need to make that change in order to have that ability to do an annual adjustment.
I don't, if I'm understanding, Dave, what you're saying, that means that the people get, thank you, the people who get elected next year will make more than the rest of the people sitting around the table. And then the year after that, those people will catch up, and the year after that, those people will catch up. But I kind of feel like, from my perspective, I want everyone to make the same at all, you know, all the time. I don't like the idea of people making more at different levels. I feel like, yeah.
I understand where you're coming from. You know, the increases have been somewhere between 2% and 3% every year. So it's not a very big amount that would be a difference. But we'd have to vote on that every year in order for that to be effective, so.
Yeah, the numbers and the dollars are basically inconsequential. It's more of a symbolic thing than it is a substantive thing. And, you know, the difference between adding 2% to what is there now is bordering on meaningless from a real point of view.
I think the city manager has figured out that the increases, if council and the mayor were given the same cost-effective increases, would be about $2,000 per year divided among the nine of us.
Right.
With the mayor gaining a disproportionate...
A meaningless amount. But higher than everyone else's.
But I think you're right. You know, the issue, and Dave and I had a long conversation about this, actually, both Davids and I had a conversation a few weeks ago. You know, frankly, it probably doesn't make any difference for us. But the point is, the way this thing is set up right now, there's really no mechanism for creating increases. At some point in time, this is going to be, and maybe it is right now, a drag on the interest in people to serve in this council. And, you know, nobody should make a lot of money on it. I think we all agree with that. But as Lynn has often said, it shouldn't cost anybody money to sit in this council. And we're probably rapidly reaching that point.
13 years. I think we, I think we have reached that point. And I look, you know, I look at what happens, how they've had this discussion multiple times in peer, and what do they pay them? Like $5,000? Who, who wants to do that? You know? It's so hard to get people to want to do that job because they are basically volunteering their time for that. And I feel like with this being 13 years, that it is getting to that point. And so I think it is important to make it something that people say, yeah, that's worth my time. And so I think this is the right time for us to address it.
And I know from being here since 2005, I guess I don't do this for the money. But the compensation sometimes is nice, especially when sometimes people, I mean, I've seen all of the council members put in a lot of work on things, and the mayor, put a lot of work on things that are passionate to them. And they don't get any extra for it during budget season. You know, we all put in time, extra time. And when big issues come up, I think we're all reading what we need to do. But like you say, I don't think any of us sit here and sit there and say, well, I did it for the $8,500 bucks. But...
I think it's, I think it's kind of funny, because the last time that it was raised unbeknownst to us, and maybe it was known to us, I don't know. Carl, argue that point. Okay? No one knew that it happened. Because when I brought it up, you know, it was like, what?
We were all pulling out our pay stubs.
Did they change the federal withholding was, I think, one of the things that I heard. And so, you know, this group obviously wasn't doing it for the money because they're not checking their pay stubs on a bi-weekly basis. So I think the point that was made to me regarding, you know, for me, it was, you know, what's this going to look like in 2025, 2020, 30? And I think $8,500 at that point will be, that's just not right. So I'm willing to do this, where I've been against it in the past. Again, the heartburn will be for me is, okay, we're doing this by resolution. Okay, this is something new. And I'm not, I wasn't accusing you, Ron, of trying to do anything here, but it's just, I have to get used to that idea.
You know, being at the municipal league last weekend, you know, I spent a lot of time with some elected officials. And a lot of them only meet twice a month. You know, even Sioux Falls only meets three times a month. You know, like you say, I mean, this isn't every Monday commitment. We are usually the ones who don't take a lot of time off in holidays unless they're on a Monday. So like you say, I'm with Dave. I think we need to do something because, you know, I don't think we can continue on this path forever. But I'd like to find, I would like to find a better fix someday in the charter.
So if you're considering running, you know, I don't believe people consider this for the money. I'm of that opinion. And if they are, then they're not going to get paid enough. And you might as well just understand that upfront, because some of the conversations you have are not comfortable. And so, you know, some of the decisions you make are tough. And so to some degree, there's not enough money to compensate you for what you're doing. But I think all of us do this because we want to see everything improve and be part of that team that does that. And so that's, that's why I'm here anyway.
Here's a thought. Since I think we all agree that the dollar figures are not going to have any real effect on us or on any potential candidate deciding whether to run or not based on a 1% or 2% difference. So with that understanding, there's not any real urgency. The problem with this would be if we go 10, 15, 20 years and we're still stuck at $8,000.
Right.
And there's some discussion of a need for a comprehensive change or view of the city charter. So maybe instead of spending a lot of time worrying about an extra $10 bill every month, we should be... month, we should be thinking about whether or not forming a commission to review the charter and recommend changes be made, and the salary thing be just one small part of that, just as a item for thought.
I agree with that position.
I think we should have done it five years ago, but, like you say, I think we need to. I think there's, again, as Rob pointed out, flaws in the charter that we need to correct. The problem with that comes is, is you could have a charter revision commission that could throw it all out the window.
You know, we gotta trust them if we're gonna do it. And so, so let's give that some thought. We don't need to make a decision on it tonight, but the dollar figure changes, you know, won't have much of a substantive effect, well, in my lifetime, some of you will still be wrong that long.
So if I may, is there a sense, then, that we should not put this on for next week, or...
I'm not eager to have this discussion again.
You're eager to have it tonight.
I missed, you said something about November.
We do the salary ordinance.
Yeah. So right now, the council and mayor salaries are all absorbed into the regular salary
ordinance.
So, but it's such a small amount that if we set it in November and then make some change before January, or whenever after January, we can adjust that. Right? I mean, there's no problem in adjusting that if we make a decision.
Well, if we set our salaries next year by ordinance, what would that do?
By resolution?
Well, we could still change it by resolution if it's January thirtieth. Change the city ordinance and then do it without...
I think where Ron was coming from is, if you look at it from a timing perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, first of all, you would have to change the ordinance with an ordinance, so that would take two readings, and so that would take you out until the beginning part of November. And then, if in fact you were willing to do that, then before, we used to have your salaries within the annual ordinance. What we would do is we'd break that out, where we'd still have the annual ordinance of salaries, but then we would tie the resolution for the counselors in that same evening where it was treated as an action as a whole. But the reason why he's asking is, we kind of wanted to do it where it would fall in order as to tradition, what we've done in the past for that November reading or implementation within January, if you're interested. If you're not interested, we won't do anything. But he was trying to get a direction as to what you would like to do.
My opinion would be let go for now, and we'd think about it. It's more in relation to dealing with the entire charter. I don't think there's any urgency to this at all.
I don't want to see it continue this way, but, you know, if we have a direction of looking at the whole charter or setting up a commission, it'll depend on what election we'd want that on, how much time they would need.
Do you want me to add to my to-do list, a report on setting up a charter commission? And, okay.
Yes. Because I think now that we've talked about it, I don't think we should just let it fall again. I think we should follow up on it.
How long is the to-do list?
I have a long to-do list.
It's huge. Have you ever seen it? It's amazing.
Job security. Any more on that or anything else yet?
No.
Well, I just want to thank Ron for the time and effort he put into this, because I feel he answered what we were asking for.
Yes.
And so I appreciate what you've done here, Ron, and I think that's exactly what we asked you to do, and so...
Good, good point. Anything from anyone else?
Who do you turn?
Second.
Motion, Ronan, second by Bunzness, all Thursday. All right.
Go ahead. Where's your?